The evaluation instead supports primary task that we want all teachers to be exposed to. It doesn't measure the conditions inside of a school. It doesn't measure or speak to all of those other things that teachers will do to form relationships with students. I have high expectations for students, how they have conversations, how they use data. So we're trying to, number one, speak from a message that we want individuals to teach students first. So we want that, and here's how we're going to measure that. Now we're constructing systems that then help us to make those determinations. So in terms of a teacher's ability to look at student work, to talk to their colleagues about what works and what doesn't, to teach a student about the importance of making important decisions, and have relationships with students first, as opposed to just this, "I'm a teacher of content, so I only know math, and I'm here to teach you math irrespective of everything that you have going." So we want individuals to be associated and teach the whole student. We also want to keep individuals inside of our system. We don't want individuals to begin with us, receive a pretty significant experience, and then leave, and take that experience somewhere else. So then it becomes, how do we sustain those individuals, particularly those who are adding value? And all of that becomes a component of a new teacher evaluation model, but it also becomes a component of this notion of getting a highly effective teacher in front of all students. And then how do we have individuals there to help build their capacity and help develop those relationships?
And for the Chamber of Commerce and the packages?
I'll take a look at that with Bob Gaskin.
And I just want to say before my time is up, our students really do realize the value of a teacher. When I talk to some of the students that are doing well in school, they always say, you know, "It's because of this teacher that I'm at the place where I'm at right now." And when I talk to a couple of the students that are doing so well, or had dropped out, or have gotten into a little bit of trouble, it's not only because of the household, but they also feel the disconnect at the school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Dr. Height, I was thinking, there's a couple, I always have some concern when we do reorganizations within critical budget times. I mean, there's always some heartburn from that. On the page 11 with the reorganization of academics, so I'm not going to actually regurgitate, but if you could give me a, you know, what does that look like beyond, you know, we want people to be able to respond right away, or, you know, have someone on the front end? So would your three associate superintendents replace the current area director structure?
Yes.
Okay.
And the three would have responsibility for all 200 schools divided amongst the three of them.
Okay. And so then with current staff, they would then be, would that require reductions in grade levels, for example?
Well, they would have, they would have all of the individuals, and so they would have, we talked about instructional superintendents as well, so underneath that group, a group of individuals who have direct responsibility for 15 to 17 principals.
Okay. And then my other question related to that, when you refer to race to the top and Title I in that structure, is there a sustainability issue as it relates to that? In other words, why is that associated with that description? It says, "Reorganization took the FTE count from 100 to 8. Race to the top and Title I will help offset these reductions."
So yeah, it's essentially going to use the grant money to help offset some of the coaching and leadership development that currently is done in-house.
And so what's the timeframe again for race to the top?
Five years.
Okay. So each year that'll be plugged into the budget as a race to the top category for sustaining the work.
It's not positions, though. That's the key point.
It's the work.
It's the role.
Okay.
It's the function.
Okay.
This is, Madam Chair, this is building the capacity. So this is, this is actually the development of, so right now we have individuals who do all of that development. They're responsible for it. And we do it centrally, and what we know is, everything that we try to offer to all schools from a central perspective, it just costs more, because we need a lot of individuals to do that. Using the race to the top funds, what we're attempting to do is create structures to train individuals on those very components we have people doing right now. So a lot of that coaching work becomes the work of the instructional superintendents and curriculum and instruction, of the people who are there now that will do that. So they have to be trained on some of those, those pieces that are now being done a lot by instructional specialists, coaches, and content specialists.
And then I guess the other question I would have is, on the next slide where we talk about moving high school consortium functions to college and career-ready, are these name changes? Are we just changing names to, I mean, Office of Talent Development? I mean, how do we keep in line with what we have and what we're getting to? So that threw me off a little bit with the moving high school consortium functions. Does that mean we're going to still have a high school consortium, or does that mean we're just changing the name to something else? Or is that your proposal?
Yeah. So the high school consortium, as it currently is designed, is going away. So we don't have that.
Okay. That's the question.
So the college and career readiness, having that definition, then ties it more closely to the graduate profile.
Okay.
So and the programs inside of that also that become important. Avid is a component of that. Advanced Placement is a component of that. The Gear Up Grant then becomes components of that. And so that becomes, the high school consortium becomes a byproduct of things that we're doing inside of curriculum and instruction right now and the high school consortium.
And I think where I've gotten lost in this process sometimes as well is, the alternative ed piece seems to be like on an island somewhere. So I mean, I think that's how we end up with a Green Valley breakdown. And that's what I'm calling a breakdown, because when we're not really keeping it in the core services around what's happening at the high school and middle school levels with our alternative ed options, I think that's where we end up. And I'm not going to bring up the incarcerated youth program again, but you know where I am on that one. And then finally, I would ask, I still need more information on the targeted class size increases. I know we're hoping that that will be the thing that comes off the table, but what if it doesn't? I really need more information on that to make an informed decision. That was just critical last year, and I think as we move forward, that's something more that we're going to need, have more information on.
We'll bring you more information on the targeted class size increases, because we, one thing that we know this year is that we cannot allow that to impact high schools the way it impacted them a year ago, particularly in the core subject areas. And so that's, a targeted class size increase is really designed to address increases in other places other than those core areas. And when I say core, I'm talking about generally the courses at the ninth and 10th grade level, where all students have to take the same course, which means that you could have a course, 12th graders can be in a course, and they may have 18 students in a class, maybe even 20. But freshmen could be in a class, and because every freshman in a school must take that course, they could have 45 or 50 kids in the class. And so the targeted is to make sure that we don't have that large of an impact, particularly at some of their larger high schools this year, in the core subject areas. I'm going to have Dr. Aubregas respond to some of the other questions, Madam Chair.
Specifically about class size, it's fascinating. And the normal ratios that we use are 22 to 1 in K, and 24 to 1 in 1 and 2, 27 to 1 in 3, 4, and 5, 27 to 1 straight across in high school. But the high school, but the middle schools are actually grouped in bands of students. And the concept was that students would travel in teams. Many other districts do not do that. What they do is they do a straight ratio. And when I apply a straight ratio across middle schools, I'm seeing great inequities across schools. So by applying a straight ratio at middle school, we think we can bring some equity, and it actually addressed some of the questions that Mrs. Beck was asking earlier. I think we just have to come up with a different ratio. The other piece is, when Mr. Sandsky costed out class size, increase of 1 in the aggregate is about $12 million. So an increase of 2 would be about $24 million, but we didn't ask for $24 million. I think we asked for 20. What we want to do is, we want to hold a pot back for our ability to balance, because as you know, ratios don't work in every situation. Sometimes the grade just simply doesn't have the students to be divided evenly by 27. So what happened this year is, we added 70 positions to address outrageous class sizes. But what we didn't do is, we didn't pull staff from outrageously low classes. And the people that are actually doing work for us, ERS, who's doing some work, preliminary data, this is preliminary, indicate that our average class size in elementary school is 21 to 1. We were surprised at that. And I guess maybe you're not surprised, but we were a little surprised that actually our class ratio puts us in the lower, we have some of the lowest class sizes across the country in the aggregate, but then we know there are these anomalies. So we want to hold some money back to address the anomaly. So when we say strategic staffing, we want to have equitable ratios, begin there, be cognizant of what the impact of an increase does, and then hold some money back so that we can address outrageous anomalies as they appear. So that's really our strategy.
Thank you. Okay. Colleagues, we have completed rounds 1 and 2, and I have one request from Ms. Johnson for a third round. I will entertain a motion if there is one.
Move to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Is there a second?
Second.
So probably move the second to suspend the rules for two rounds, five minutes, three minutes. Ms. Beck, do you want to put a timeframe on the third round?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock?
No, no timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? She's just, yeah. Thank you. All right. Chair recognizes Ms. Johnson, Ms. Waller, and Ms. Higgins.
Just very quickly, testing coordinators, very important work, security, et cetera, you know, getting the boxes open, distributing them. Who's going to do that work? And my next question is, and my last question is, reorganization. I understand why it needs to be done, but I will also say, and you are aware, that when we have reorganized, not just last year, but in other years, many saw reorganization, they, their position, they were going to be riffed, and they were allowed to reclassify or jump to another one to avoid, and so we never got the adjustments we wanted. I just want to know, how are you going to handle position control through the reorganization to ensure that people who should go into a position are not disadvantaged by those who have the push, the pull, the clout? Are we taking that away? I'm not saying anything that is not absolutely true. I want to be sure that reorganization is not going to enable a process whereby people can trade up to avoid what would possibly mean a riff for them or some kind of change in status. And so those are my two, and my final questions. Thank you. Data coaches and...
Testing coordinators or data coaches, Ms. Johnson? We're not eliminating testing coordinators. And I'll have Ms. Shillen respond to the one about the reorg.
So there will be some positions that will be impacted by reorgs that will actually be open competition for internal candidates only. And I'll give you an example. When we combine payroll with benefits, it's an overall net reduction of FTEs, but there is two positions that we are losing. We're going to take one of those positions and create an analyst. And so that will be a new vacancy, but people will be able to compete for that vacancy so that a person who was scheduled for elimination in their current position can compete for a different position. In all other cases, the negotiated agreement will be strictly followed. Where the negotiated agreement was silent last year or ambiguous, we worked with each union to come up with a set of rules around bumping, around seniority, around how we were going to make those decisions, and that worked well. Obviously, we're in a different, this year presents a different scope for us because of the number of reductions that we're going to see. So we may not make all of the concessions that we were able to make last year in terms of bumping and some of the other things that we had some discretion on. So we'll get to that with our labor partners, and we'll come up with a set of rules. But in terms of people, you know, being favored for trading up, that's not going to happen. There's going to be an open competition for internal candidates only, and we'll make sure the unions are aware of those situations as they occur in the reorganizations.
And no changing the name, even though you're doing the same type work?
Exactly. So if it's a new name, it must be a new position and a new job description to create that competition scenario.
Ms. Waller?
Thank you. I too share my colleague's concern about class sizes, and in particular with our schools, our middle schools and our high schools inside the Beltway, and the schools that are, have our students coming, theater schools that have been Title I schools. When we have 7th and 8th graders going to 9th graders, I feel that it's important that we monitor those class sizes and the number of students and provide resources as necessary to those students. Insofar as communications is concerned, in cutting back on the staff with our television station, does this mean that we're going to be cutting back on the hours that we're going to be providing programming?
Yes, that would be a byproduct of that. Ms. Waller?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Higgins?
Okay. I've moved from revenue possibilities, and I wanted to ask, on the original, in this latest proposal, we've had adjustments mentioned. So where is that number then? It used to be $85 million gap. With these adjustments, what's the overall number?
The revenue adjustments? Are you speaking to?
The whole picture. It's always been proposed that we have an $85 million gap.
Yeah.
So with these adjustments, what's the number?
So the gap started at 155 million.
Right.
Got it down to 85.
That's right.
So the gap is still 85 with a proposal of some revenue enhancements and some expenditure declines.
So even with these increases in costs to retaining reading recovery or...
Right.
ROTC, those kinds of things?
We added, so leasing the buildings to the charter schools.
Okay.
Has, you know, offset that.
All right. I also...
I just, I just want to make sure this is...
I don't want to take my three minutes.
Yeah. I just want to make sure this is clear, too, that in the proposal, we're still anticipating $25 million from the county government in addition.
I understand that.
So I just want to make sure that's...
So that if we don't get that, we have to come back and do another 25. Right. Okay. I really, like many of my colleagues have said, I truly appreciate the creativity of you, Dr. Height, and your staff in terms of addressing many of the programs that we've talked about, the JROTC, the evening, trying to look at dealing with the transportation. There are still some remaining programs that I'm, you know, convinced add tremendous value to our program. And I wanted to ask then, make sure I'm understanding that if we're going to assure the reading recovery program for the 1,000 first graders, who are the worst readers or have most difficulty, we're still looking at having to either come up with probably $4.5 million gap, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And in regards to the media specialists, who, you know, certainly have made a very good case about being integral to the, you know, the highly capable teachers' work and integrating that, we heard testimony from numerous studies across the country that the test scores increased by 15% with staffed libraries of that specialty. So I don't know if I have a question to that, except to have been educated that even without these cuts, we're meeting, 62% of our schools are meeting the state requirement, standard for, it's a Maryland state standard for school library media programs. Right now, without any cuts, we're at 62%, whereas our neighboring jurisdictions are at 97% and 98% of their schools. And I do have a question to that, and that's, how are we, how with these cuts would we monitor $52 million worth of equipment and resources that exist in those schools?
Thank you, Ms. Higgins, for the question. We did some investigative work with the Maryland State Department of Education as well on the meeting state standards. Dr. Aubregas, can you talk about that?
Yeah. The, I specifically asked the question, does this put us in jeopardy for accreditation? And the answer is no. So, and the standards are related not only to media services offered, but to volumes in the library. And when I looked over the history, it looked like Prince George's County had made a pretty significant investment in library media about three years ago, because there was a huge bump in our standing about three years ago, particularly around number of texts on hand. So clearly, Prince George's County has tried to close that gap over the last four years, but the proposed reduction does not put us in jeopardy with any type of accreditation.
Yeah. I'd just like to follow up on that. The way it's now, you proposing revising it, I believe, is my understanding correct, that with the credited schools are the high schools, and if we put a full media specialist in each of the high schools, we don't jeopardize our accreditation? What I'm saying is, the standards that the state says should be held for school library, we currently are only 62% of their state standards ratio, whereas our neighboring jurisdictions are at a much higher level.
And my point is that staffing of media is only part of that standard, and there are other criteria. We have, we have full-time media specialists in very, very small schools right now, and not all systems are able to maintain, not all districts in the state of Maryland are able to maintain that kind of staffing.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be back.
So, Dr. Height, some of what we've had a discussion about is sort of in the future in terms of, you know, to Ms. Boston's point about looking at the small schools and how that'll be, how that can impact the budget and making sure we're more efficient and more effective. I would assume that some of the conversations we're having about staffing and the number of people in a given building would be affected by those kinds of changes.
Yes, they would, Madam Chair, but it's also, as you know, that the Board has policy around boundary changes and timelines for that.
Right.
And that's why I said that it would have to be for work for FY13 as opposed to FY12.
Right. Okay. Ms. Boston?
Yeah, I'm getting, a lot of my constituents are emailing me about the article that came out in the Gazette where it lists everybody's salary. And this is, it's concerned to me that, as well as my constituents, that we're having secretaries in just no more than a high school diploma making, you know, salaries that really are higher than we have our teachers. I just want to know that we're putting something, or we're working on putting some type of process in place that this won't continue to happen, because it makes us not look, you know, it's just bad. And then we're talking about increasing class sizes and cutting teachers. You know, I just want to make sure that we put something in place that we don't continue down this path.
You're right, Ms. Boston. It makes us look like our priorities are out of whack.
Exactly.
And the, and so part of that is, so it's some reasons behind that. Number one is that those, a compensation structure are a product of negotiations, and these are previous negotiations or contracts that have been negotiated over years, which means that the salary of individuals are dictated based on those negotiated agreements. With respect to that, as I talked about moving forward, I was responding to Ms. Waller's question about changing the conversation, and about changing the conversation so our compensation structure matches our priorities. And if our priorities are putting teachers as the most important individual, and principals as most important individuals, then we have to have a salary or a compensation structure that demonstrates that and communicates that. And so I think as we, I can't negotiate the contract without our labor partners in this conversation, however, I think that becomes a critical piece as we, as we talk about the next round of contract negotiations with respect to salaries.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. Ms. Waller?
Certainly. I don't want to belabor the comments that we just heard, but in defense of this title, secretary, in some instances, okay, somebody may say they may only have a high school education, but I assure you that at some of the salaries that these secretaries are making, they are just about running these schools. They have their principals' right hand, left hand, and they've been there a number of years. And certainly, we do not want to diminish what the secretaries are doing and what they have done. A lot of times, they're heading up a lot of organizations and activities that are participating in this school, and I think that we are doing a disservice by even comparing them to the role of a teacher. Yes, teachers, they are called, they are not made, and they are not paid enough. When they get through with their, the student loans and everything that they have, my heart goes out to them. The hours that the majority of our teachers work from 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning to 6:30, 7 o'clock, 8:30, 9, 10 o'clock at night, and the things that they do on Saturdays, they're not paid really for what they are worth. So therefore, I think we can't get hung up on titles and what people do. All of our persons, we'd like to think, have value add in our school system. We can even go back to our retiree, rehirees who've had a full career but come back and get another salary. So I think that we need to be fair in just calling out a secretary. A secretary is integral to any organization. A lot of times, they're no longer even called secretaries. They're called administrative assistants, executive assistants, and they work their way up the career ladder, just like everyone else. And I'm sorry, but I just had to weigh in on that. For the public, it's just like our persons that maintain the cleanliness of our buildings. They have a value add that's invaluable in reaching out to all of our students, insofar as the public safety and seeing our students on and off the property. I know in the district that I represent right now, I'm, they're my eyes and my ears in a lot of instances in what's happening in the communities, at the malls. We have issues going on. We can't get hung up by titles and salaries. And I'm not saying that there's a misconnect, but we need to keep it real, and we just don't need to single out one certain area. And I think that our constituents need to be aware of that. Thank you.
Ms. Waller, I hope I didn't suggest anything that did not, that I communicated anything that didn't appreciate the work that our clerical staff do every day. I think they're a critical part of our work. I think the other part of the conversation, however, is that, so there is a market, and there's a market value, and there's a market value for most of the positions. And so we have to really look at those against what the market suggests those positions should be. And we do have, with respect to teachers, one thing we do know is that our ability or inability to impact a student is made right there. And so if we, when we talk about compensation structures, I'm thinking that the teachers become a critical part. And if, in fact, we talk about highly effective teachers as a key priority, I'm just suggesting that that should be reflected in a compensation, in a compensation package.
And certainly, I agree with you, and I didn't mean to infer that you had, but, and it's so important that we do have our teachers fairly compensated, because we are about academic rigor, and they play an integral role in these students' lives from pre-K all the way through high school, and our students come back to these teachers even after they're in college and once they're out. So no, a teacher is, a good teacher, highly qualified, certified, is worth their weight and go. Thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
I just, next week, when we have to vote on this budget, we're either going to have to take these cuts that you're recommending, or trade the cuts, but with other possibilities. We don't know whether we're going to get any more money for this budget, and we still have a question whether we're going to get the additional $25 million that we're going still have a question whether we're going to get the additional $25 million that we've requested from the county, correct? Well, I guess I would say, if we do get, and Mr. Armwood asked the question, and I would, my, my thought is, and if we get the $20 million restored and if we only get $20 million, I'd be in favor of using just half of that money to restore the, um, the class size. So we would, um, you know, be at one more rather than two-year, and then maybe using, um, the other monies to be able to restore some of these, uh, valuable programs that we've already talked about. And, and, you know, I'm looking at reading recovery because those are those first graders who can't read and what's going to happen. And the, um, media specialists, because I've become convinced that they are integral to the success of the academic achievement of the children. I also want to appreciate certainly Ms. Boston's comments and say that I share them about we need to look at, um, at our school sizes. We're putting money into buildings, we need to be putting money into children, and we need to take control of our own destiny and be proactive in doing that. It's going to be hard, it's going to be painful, but it'll save us from being surprised next year when we have shortfalls that we have to address, so. One last thing, and that would be regarding the National Board Certified Program. I, I think it's a value. We're looking for qualified best teachers. These really people are, who've taken the bullet and have gone to advance that credential. Can we, though, have those, we pay for those, that certification. So if we pay for that certification, can we have those applications tied to schools so that the person who is interested in applying for that program already be in the school, be part of that school, and then be part of that school environment so that it's not once they get their certification, we say, okay, now we're going to move you to a different school?
That's not in the, that's not contained in the current negotiated agreement, Ms. Higgins, but that, um, should definitely be a, a function of the next set of negotiations with, with the teachers' union.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Colleagues, that brings us to, um, conclusion on today's work session as we have no other, um, questions or comments from board members. But as a reminder, we're scheduled to treat the budget as an emergency item on the February 24th board meeting date. Um, Dr. Height, there's still some outstanding questions that, um, clearly would need to be answered, as I heard from our colleagues, um, in order for them to feel comfortable to vote one way or the other. Um, so I would encourage you and staff to diligently look at that. And, um, as we have done in the past, we know that these become marathon sessions. So, um, provided that the 24th becomes a different day for voting or not, um, maybe I'll give a precursor to another Saturday if we have to. Um, but if we don't have to, that's fine, too. We want to respect staff and your, thank you for being here, obviously, and the community. But, um, as much as we can answer questions from, from today, um, moving forward and have the ability to properly, you know, and diligently make an informed decision, that would be much helpful to the board. And with that, motion to adjourn. Second and all in favor.